A little louder. Very good. We'll call the meeting to order. It's the meeting of May 21st. We're going to note that Commissioner Altman is absent. All other commissioners are present. And with us today is Greg Palmer. Greg is a third grader at Hart River Elementary School. And many of the third graders in Dickinson, I think it was in February, wrote an essay, a one-page essay, on what they would do if they were mayor for a day. So Greg has been selected to represent all the third graders in Dickinson who entered that contest. So he's going to assist with the meeting today. And if we have any Minnesota developers that get out of line, they're going to have to answer to Mr. Palmer today. So. So, welcome. So, how was the third grade this year? It was good? So. Are you going on to fourth grade next year? All right. Then it was good. Okay. Well, the first item of business here is the order of business. Are there any changes or modifications to the order of business? If not, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
So move.
I'll say.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. The motion carries. So the next item is the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Not as there a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson, Mr. Steiner, Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. So we're going to go to the non-timetable agenda, but before we take the first item there, city engineer, public works director, Soren has an introduction to make.
Thank you, President Johnson and city commissioners. I do have an introduction. I'd like to introduce the assistant city engineer who started with us a week ago, last Monday. His name is Nathan Peck. He comes to us from Illinois, and I'd ask him to come up and maybe introduce himself with a little of his background.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you mentioned, I come from Illinois, and I spent most of my life in central Illinois. So it's the non-Chicago stereotype that you may be thinking. My background is in very similar towns to this. Most of my career I spent in the south suburbs of Chicago, in which until four years ago were rapidly growing, just like this state. And most of my work background is in transportation and municipal design, and that's where I look to focus my efforts, as well as assisting Sean in any way he feels necessary.
And, well, welcome, Mr. Peck. Did you have difficulty finding housing here?
Well, I'm in a temporary housing situation right now, but I hope to change that very soon.
Good. And can you, did you bring a family with you?
No. I left most of my belongings, as well as my relationships, back in Illinois, but anybody knows how I can change that pretty soon, I can entertain offers.
We won't probe too deep there, but you can have Aaron put your telephone number up.
Yeah.
There's a banner.
Flash on the screen.
Okay.
Well, thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here.
We appreciate you being here, and we just recently learned that we were successful in recruiting you, and we're pleased you're here, and thank you for introducing yourself. And good luck in your new role, in your new position.
You're very welcome. Thank you.
First item we have is the financial report. Mrs. Johnson, who normally gives a report, had to leave unexpectedly today, so there will not be a presentation of the financial report. But, of course, it was part of our meeting packets. Her slides have been handed out, along with the remarks that she would have made. So I think at this time, we would just ask that we approve the written report, and perhaps the next meeting, or any subsequent meeting, we'll just have her do double duty and present the April financials, along with the May financials. But are there any comments or questions about the financial report?
President Johnson, I just would like to point out that you'll notice it's a slightly different format to this report, or for this presentation, I should say, than others. The 1 percent sales tax is actually broken down into three separate divisions, a 50, a 20, and a 30 percent tax. We're trying to do that to better reflect the uses of that sales tax collection, and we'll continue to use that type of format in the future. So I just wanted to point that out. As you're reviewing, it might look slightly different than it has in the past.
Okay. Thank you. And I, for the public, the sales tax collections for the first four months of the year are running slightly more than 60 percent ahead of last year, which are very strong. I wouldn't expect that that would continue, but we had a, you know, a record-setting year last year, so that just reflects the amount of economic development that's going on in this community. Any other comments or questions about the financial report? Would there be a motion, then, to approve the written report?
I'll move.
We have the motion. Is there a second? Mr. Jackson made the motion. Mr. Frenzel seconded it. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. The next item is the littering ordinance revision, and Mr. Coleen, you introduce that?
Yes, Mr. President, commissioners. This proposed ordinance makes a change to the grading of an offense for littering. Currently, littering is graded as a Class B misdemeanor. If this ordinance is approved, would reduce that grade to an infraction. I would be punishable by a fine of up to $200 for each offense. There have been no changes since first reading. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Coleen. You've heard his introduction. At this time, we'll ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment regarding this proposed ordinance. If so, you can step to the podium, state your name, and we'd hear your comments. There's no one from the public. Any comments or questions by city staff or city commissioners? Not as there a motion regarding ordinance number 1460.
Mr. President, move to approve second reading and final passage of ordinance 1460.
We have the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
And the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. We'll go to item C, which is a franchise-free ordinance, and Mr. Coleen will have you introduce that one also.
Mr. President, commissioners, this ordinance allows for an extension of Consolidated's current franchise for operating telephone data lines within the city. The current ordinance, or current franchise for Consolidated has expired, and this ordinance, if approved, would allow for an extension of that for another 10 years. It is substantially unchanged from the franchise that Consolidated was formerly operating under, and this ordinance is unchanged since first reading.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coleen. Is there anyone from the public that would like to address our comment regarding this ordinance? If so, step to the podium, state your name. We'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public. Any comments from city staff or city commission members? There's no comments. Would there be a motion regarding ordinance 1461?
I'll move to approve second reading, final passage of 1461.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We'll go to item D. This is annexations. There are three of them, and Mr. Carton will introduce these items.
Mr. President, commissioners, the first annexation that we have tonight is Tweeton's third addition. This proposed annexation is located northerly of the city limits and westerly of Highway 22. The property size is 2.19 acres. The applicant requests the city to annex their property into the city in order to finish their rezoning from ag to community commercial, in order to build a hotel, and also to provide urban services. Attaching your pack of materials is a legal description and map for the property. City staff recommend approval to proceed with the annexation process. Mr. President?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Carton. Is there a resolution number?
Mr. President, this would be Resolution 18-2012.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Coleen. Are there any comments or questions from city staff or city commissioners? If not, is there a motion regarding Resolution 18-2012?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is State and 21st Street addition, or annexation. This proposed annexation is generally located to the north and south of 21st Street West, westerly of State Avenue, and a portion of it would be situated in the general vicinity of the northeastern quadrant of the intersection of 21st Street West and State Avenue. The total acreage for all the properties is 134.58 acres. The revised annexation resolution and notice for public hearing that was submitted to you today contained a complete description for the annexation. This document submitted by Sanderson Stewart illustrate the properties included in the annexation. This annexation further includes abutting properties that are anticipated to object to this annexation, but are included in order to avoid islands or donut holes of county properties surrounded by the city. It is the current city policy to include such properties to avoid awkward jurisdictional boundaries and conflicts that could result from them. The applicant requests that this property, along with several others in the adjoining area, be included in the proponents totals, and these are necessary to finalize the current rezonings and platting requirements that are going forth through the planning commission and city commission, and as well as providing urban services. City staff recommend approval to proceed with this annexation. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Carton. Mr. Coleen, is this Resolution 19?
It is, Mr. President. Yes.
Okay. You've heard Mr. Carton's introduction. Are there any comments, questions by city commissioners?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Frenzel.
I'll be abstaining from this call.
Any other comments? If not, is there a motion regarding Resolution 19?
Mr. President, move to approve Resolution Number 19.
I'll second.
2012. Okay. We have the motion to approve by Mr. Steiner, the second by Mr. Jackson. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel abstains. The chair votes aye. The motion carries.
Mr. President, the next annexation is called the Sundance Annexation. This proposed annexation is located easterly of the intersection of 21st Street East and 10th Avenue East. The applicant's property is situated approximately one-half mile, or one mile, from the intersection. Since it is not contiguous to the city's boundary, the applicant has included several properties in between their property and the city limits in order to achieve a contiguous annexation boundary. The total annexation size is 511.87 acres, and included in this total is less than 25 percent anticipated opposition properties. The applicant is here tonight to answer any questions relative to this annexation. Further, it is, if the commissioner approves the annexation resolution and notice of public hearing tonight, the applicant will submit a planning development application for their project to be submitted to the June Planning and zoning commission. The applicant has also included in your annexation and subsequent PUD a detailed list of items that they would like to provide or furnish to the city to mitigate the impacts of this development. Please refer to the email that Sean Kessel provided to you earlier today describing those items that they would, that they would provide to the city in order to mitigate the impacts. City staff recommends approval in order to proceed with the annexation process. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Carton. Mr. Coleen, I assume it's Resolution 20?
That's correct.
Okay. Commissioners, you've heard the introduction. Do you have any comments or questions? Mr. Coleen, I have a question. The applicant in the letter that Mr. Carton referred to has volunteered or agreed to do a number of things. How do we ensure that those are, I guess, part of the formal agreement? What's the process for that?
Mr. President, I anticipate that we'll bring back before you a development agreement, signed by the developer, and subject to your approval, which would include all of the items that the developer is committing to perform in that letter, as well as I anticipate a performance bond of some sort, ensuring performance from the city's point of view.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President, in addition to that, as part of the planning unit development, you're allowed to establish conditions of approval. These items will be attached to this conditions of approval to memorialize the approval for the planning unit development. So we'll have, you know, if we need to have the development agreement, otherwise, the PUD will have those conditions as well. So we could have two in order to accomplish that, or we can include it within the PUD, whichever way that we decide to proceed forward with it.
Okay. Thank you. As Mr. Carton said, there are representatives from the Sundance Group. If any member of the commission would like to ask a question or make any comments, you're certainly welcome to.
Mr. President.
Mr. Jackson.
You know, I think I'm probably asking the same question you just did, maybe in a little different way, but are we to assume, in approving this annexation tonight, that we are agreeing to all the items in this letter? Okay? Because there are two or three items that look to me like they need a lot more fleshing out, and, okay.
I would concur with that, Commissioner Jackson. There's still some issues that are yet to be resolved. They presented this to both John Soren and myself in a meeting prior to this one. We went over them. These are items that we feel comfortable with, that help mitigate the impacts, and we still need to massage them, the language, to work out some of the details, but generally speaking, what is contained within this will be brought forth to you.
Okay. Good.
Other comments or questions? Not? This is Resolution 20-2012. Would there be a motion regarding this resolution?
Mr. Chairman, I'll move that we approve the Sundance Annexation Resolution, I'm sorry, 20.
20.
20-2012.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion?
Mr. President, just by way of discussion, you know, we're seeing more and more requests for annexation. We're going to see a lot more, I expect, and some of the decisions are going to be easier than others. You know, I wish that this half-section land proposed for development was a little bit closer to the city, but I think that we need to approve this because I think it's a good-looking development. I think that the owners have made commitments to us that are very important and are probably going to set some precedent for us, for what we might look for in the future. I see it as being mostly a positive thing. You know, we're going to reach out a mile, and that's significant. We have to understand that, but I think that this will be good for our city.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Any other comments? Mr. Palmer, do you know what an annexation is? Okay. Well, annexation is when the city's growing and we're going to add land to the city, so we're starting the formal process of adding some more land to the city. It's just, we're a growing city. You think we should do this? Okay. So, we have the motion and the second. Is there any, any other comments? Not, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
The chair and Mr. Palmer agree. We vote aye, so motion carries. That, oh, yes.
Mr. Carton, could, Mr. Carton, could a map of these annexations be provided to the Dickinson Press? I hear from a lot of people that, you know, they hear about these annexations, but they really don't know where they're at. If you could put that in the paper, I think people would like to see it. Thank you.
Commissioner Steiner, I would imagine the applicants would be more than happy to give that to the paper tonight.
Talking about the other two annexations also.
Yes.
Yeah.
Anything else you want to say to the Dickinson Press, Mr. Steiner? Are we, we're good to go?
Not right now, maybe in three weeks.
Okay. All right. We're going to move on to item E, then, and this is a professional service contract, and we'll let Mr. Kessel tell us about this item.
Thank you, President Johnson. Before you is a contract for professional services to engage Roosevelt Custer Regional Council for assisting the city in some administrative work related to the CDBG, or Community Development Block, grant received. We are a sponsor of that block grant, and Han Development is providing the development itself. And Roosevelt Custer will, on our behalf, provide the administrative services for that contract. Han Development will pay Roosevelt Custer, so there will not be a cost to the city of Dickinson in this agreement. You did have a chance to look at the agreement at a previous meeting, and Han Development has agreed to the agreement and signed it, so today sits before you the final execution, if you so desire.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. You've heard his introduction. Any comments or questions concerning this agreement? Not, would there be a motion to approve the contract?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? All right. We'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. So the motion carries. Item F is also, will be introduced by Mr. Kessel, and perhaps you can announce what this is and make the introduction.
Certainly, President Johnson. This is a CDBG award. The city of Dickinson, again, would be the recipient or sponsor of that award. It's for Lincoln Park Apartments LLC. This is a low-income housing development. I don't have a map, so I can't share you the exact location, but I believe Beyond Shelter is the sponsor, will be doing these, these projects. They also will be participating in the recently developed HIF program, or Housing Incentive Fund program, and I believe that makes it officially our first HIF project in the city of Dickinson, so we're excited to have that, and potentially to be adding additional low-income housing units. Those are obviously high in demand. So if the city agrees to sponsor the CDBG, we'd be a pass-through agent on behalf of the Lincoln Park Apartments. We have certainly done many of these agreements in the past, and so it'd be our recommendation to do the same.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kessel. You've heard his introduction and his recommendation. Are there any questions or comments? Not, would there be a motion to approve the contract?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Brings us to item G, and this has to do with the city hall remodel. Mr. Kessel, would you introduce this item?
Thank you, President Johnson, Commission. These are the official contracts to engage Berger Electric, Central Mechanical, and Ainsworth Benning to conduct a remodel and refurbishing of the lower level of city hall. We will be attempting to place about seven or eight different offices down there. The assessing and finance departments, along with IT, will transfer to the lower level upon its completion, and this would officially engage those contractors to do that work. This project did come in under budget, and we are excited for them to start work as soon as possible. We are burgeoning at the seams.
Okay. You've heard the introduction, along with the editorial comments. Are there any comments or questions? Would there be a motion, then, to approve these agreements?
So move.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Brings us to item H. This involves NDSU. Mr. Kessel, would you like to introduce?
Thank you, President Johnson. This is a no-cost, time extension on the project. We engaged NDSU to provide us with some population data as part of our comprehensive plan. They were to be completed with this work by May 31st of 2012. We are almost complete with that project, but not quite. So this is a technical requirement to extend that date to August 31st of 2012. We believe we'll be completed with all of the work that we have engaged them by that time. Technically, Nancy Holder is the principal investigator for the project, and NDSU is the project, or the organization that we've engaged. So we would certainly recommend an extension, as requested.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. You've heard his introduction and recommendation. Any comments or questions? Not, would there be a motion to approve the extension?
So move.
We have a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Brings us to item I, and this is one that Chief Seavock will introduce regarding the North Dakota Department of Emergency Services. So, Chief Seavock.
President Johnson, commissioners, and Mr. Palmer, this grant in front of us is a result of the Dickinson Fire Department and the city of Dickinson's partnership with the state of North Dakota in providing a regional response concept to hazardous materials incidents. As you well know, the Dickinson Fire Department is one of eight North Dakota fire departments involved in the regional response concept, and it is recognized that video teleconferencing equipment will be beneficial to us in bringing our resources together in a timely fashion for meetings or trainings, and that's what the grant will purchase for the Dickinson Fire Department, video teleconferencing equipment, to link us with the other seven departments. There is no match involved. All we need to do is provide the space and the connection, which is well within our budget and already available.
Okay. Thank you, Chief. You've heard his introduction. Are there any comments or questions for Chief Seavock? Not, would there be a motion to approve this agreement?
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. It brings us to the city administrators' reports.
Thank you, President Johnson. Formally, there's only one item, and that's a thank you from the senior center in New England. They've appreciated the receipt of funds to sponsor their project. It's a grant project that we've used sales tax funds. And if I may, I'd also like to just mention that the city of Dickinson hosted Gilbert Gonzalez Gonzalez today. He's with the, he's the Director of the Royal Business Program in southwest Texas. He is up in North Dakota this week. He's going to partake in the Williston Basin Petroleum Council meetings in Bismarck, and he wanted to visit Dickinson and learn how we are dealing with the oil impacts that we're experiencing in North Dakota. And so he has spent the majority of the day today with various local officials, of which I had the privilege of showing him around Dickinson. So I found it interesting that Texas is the leading oil-producing state in the nation, and they're coming to North Dakota to figure out how to deal with some of their local impacts.
Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Any comments or questions for the city administrator? Any questions you'd like to ask him? We're good. Okay. Well, then, we have a 5:00 timetable agenda item. That's an Arbor Day presentation, and Judge Bob Keel is here to make that presentation. Welcome, Judge.
Thank you, Mayor Johnson. Commissioners, did I miss an election? You've got this young man here, I assume, a new commissioner?
He's mayor for a day.
Oh, okay, wow.
And if this works out, he's thinking of being judge for a week.
I wish him a lot of luck. Well, I'm, I'm honored to be here on behalf of the Urban Forestry Committee. I have good news and bad news. The good news is that I'm not asking for any money. The bad news is that we're not as organized as we'd like to be. We've had some change of personnel, and I was supposed to have a nice fancy letter to hand out to explain, so I wouldn't have to say a word. Didn't work out that way. But we are planning for our annual Arbor Day celebration on June 9th, 10:00 in the morning. Shovels will be provided. And what we're going to do this year is focus on downtown. We don't have a very elaborate plan or expensive plan, but downtown is where we're going to go. Our main folks will be right here over just to the west, west of Gate City, across the street, and that used to be the funeral home at one time. Several trees were taken down in the past. We're going to replace those trees, possibly put a bench there. It's a nice wide area. And look at other areas of downtown that we can put in a tree or two. So that's our plan for this year. We expect to contact the public. We have in the past sent out mailings to invite donations. We're very grateful for the funds that have been donated by the public over the past years, and we expect to get some more as well to build up our fund in order to buy trees as are needed. In the future, we plan to try to work with Ed. We've heard a rumor that he has, he has ideas about trees, and perhaps he can, he can help our committee out as we try to move forward. But Arbor Day is June 9th this year, 10:00 in the morning, a Saturday, and we'll actually be planting trees on the spot, and our forester, Trent Schweitzer, is also in the audience, and he'll provide education for any of you homeowners that want to learn how to plant a tree the right away. So that's, that's our report. It's very brief, but that's our plan for this year. Any questions? We have to try to answer them, or perhaps Trent can answer.
Well, I do, Mr. Palmer and I do have a question. If this is about trees, why don't they call it Tree Day? Why do they call it Arbor Day?
I, I think that would take a lot of research to answer that question, Mr. Mayor, but I think Arbor has to do with trees.
It does.
So somewhere along the line. But we could change, if you want to put money into this, we'll change the name.
No, I'm fine with Arbor Day. We're okay with that, so, all right. Any, any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And we appreciate, I shouldn't, I should close by saying, we appreciate the support you've given us in the past. I know that some years we've come asking for money specifically, but this year we have it budgeted for us, so we have a fund to work with, and that'll help a lot. We expect to spend $2,000 or $3,000 on trees. Trees are, of the size we get, they're not cheap, and so the forester will arrange to pick those trees out, but that's what our budget range is going to be, so I think we can handle that, and with what'll happen to public, we'll make it work.
Well, you missed your chance, because it's an election year. All of us incumbents are in favor of trees, so I'm sure you could have got some money if you'd asked, though, but you missed.
And you're also in favor of spending money, I suppose, so.
No, just on trees.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
Mr. President, I could add that the Commission, I'll be working with the Commission, so next year we'll come back for a double portion.
Oh, you will, okay.
And I'd just like to say thanks for this opportunity, President, Commissioners, and just like to put the word out, come over and have a cup of coffee, whoever wants to join in Arbor Day and, or plantin'.
That's on, that's on June 9th?
June 9th, at 10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m., and where will you be again?
Yeah, corner of, northwest corner of Sims and Second Street West.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
All right. Okay, well, I think we can go to the public safety portion and hear the fire department report. Chief Seavock.
President Johnson, Commissioners, and Mr. Palmer, despite our IT's best efforts to destroy our report, we still have it. We present the April report for the activities of the Dickinson Fire Department. April incident responses were at 38. A 73% increase over 2011, a 172% increase over April of 2010. 2011, for those who can't see, was 22 incidents. 2010 was 14. Fire calls by type, actual fires from January 1st to April 30th, 2012, were at 12 actual fires, compared to six actual fires in the same timeframe in 2011. 100% increase in actual fire calls. 29 under hazardous conditions, 29 hazardous material-related incidents in that same timeframe in 2012 versus 18 in 2011. A 62% increase in hazardous materials responses for us compared to last year. And again, you can see the false alarms and false calls. We have quite an increase there. We have that many more buildings that are involving fire suppression systems and alarm systems that comes into play in increasing that one. Special type calls, a lot of our complaints, our tanker calls, our backyard fireplaces, fire pits, get captured in that category. 30 this year compared to five last year. Fire prevention and public education, 50 routine inspections, 59 follow-up inspections, only a five construction, one childcare. Only one childcare, that's kind of surprising. 10 miscellaneous, 18 tours, lectures, and demos. The 50 and the 59, if you notice, from month to month, we're maintaining status quo, but we're not gaining on it. Everything else is growing exponentially compared to us maintaining the status quo. Spring cleanup happened for the City of Dickinson in April, chaired by Terry Kavasovich, and I do hope I pronounced that correctly, from Marathon Oil. The spring cleanup meeting that kicked it off was April 10th. This year, we saw a record number of groups helping with cleanup efforts along with the Adopt a Railway Program. And there are some Marathon Oil and I believe it's Power Fuels in the bottom corner there that were out, along with many others, like we've stated. April activities for the fire department, regular training. We dealt with grass fire tactics and water shuttle operations. Special Operations Group is practicing tactical and emergency decontamination, dealing with hazardous materials incidents. Deb Burrows attended a child abduction response team training. We were invited to that through the Police Department. We appreciate being a partner with that. That was April 3rd through the 5th in South Dakota. Staff was on scene at the nurse camp at Dickinson State University, April 21st, where we were demoing our technical rescue equipment for the nurses. We did three extinguisher demonstrations that had over 50 participants involved also in April. And recent retirements from the volunteer fire department, members that we want to recognize for their years of service to the department and to the community. Bruce Carey, 25 years of service. Darwin Volk, 20 years of service. Bruno Provotsky, 18 years of service. And just real briefly, I want to mention to you an incident that we had last Thursday, May 17th, in our north annexation, in the 4400 block of First Avenue West. And I bring it up for a couple of reasons. It's important that you know about it, and it's also, I believe, food for thought for a discussion point for a later time. We had a hazardous materials release that evening in the 4400 block of First Avenue West. We responded with the resources that we have available to us. Our first-on-scene pumper deployed two attack lines for vapor suppression. This was dealing with a flammable gas that was leaking from a truck, propane gas, to be specific. Those two attack lines each are capable of flowing 300 gallons per minute, if we would have needed them for suppression of vapors. The truck itself is capable of pumping 1,500 gallons per minute in an actual fire. That truck carries 500 gallons of water. We had a second pumper on scene to feed that one that carries 750 gallons of water, a third pumper on scene to back that one up that carries 500 gallons of water. We had a total of 1,750 gallons of water on scene. If we would have needed it, we would have been flowing 600 gallons per minute. We had less than three minutes of water supply available to us for vapor suppression, if we would have needed it. We had a three-and-a-half mile trip from the central fire station to the incident location. Everything turned out well. There were no injuries, and we were able to mitigate the situation, actually without having to pump any water. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Chief Seavock. Are there any comments or questions for the chief? All right, thank you. I think we'll hear next from the Chief of Police, and then we'll go back to the timetable agenda after Chief Dossinger is complete.
Good evening, Mr. President, Members of the Commission. I have before you the April 2012 monthly report for the Police Department. I will start out with the traffic accidents. We had a total of 96 traffic accidents the month of April. Three of those were injury-related, and 20 of those were hit-and-run accidents. A three-year comparison for the month of April, I can see that we have 96, like I said, for this April 2012. Still not too bad considering the amount of traffic that we've had in our city at this time. Not a big increase over the last year. Happy to report that, like I said, only three of those were injury-related. That's a very good ratio.
Chief, are they hit-and-runs on private property, mall parking lots, or are they?
A lot of them occur in the parking lots, that's correct. A large percentage of them occur in the Walmart parking lot, Prairie Hills Mall parking lot, parking lots of apartment complexes. Those are very difficult to solve unless there's some evidence left behind at the scene. As far as our traffic enforcement efforts, there were a total of 133 warnings issued and 369 citations, for a total of 581 traffic stops conducted for the month. Comparing the calls for service over the last five years for the month of April, we had 2,134 calls for service for the month of April, compared to 1,829 calls for service for the same time last year. A January to April comparison for the year-to-date, for the same, the same years, we're at 8,926 calls for this year, compared to 6,577 calls for service the same timeframe last year.
Chief Dossinger, how does that compare to other cities? Where does that put us in relation to some of the larger communities in North Dakota?
We're very comparable to the cities of Bismarck and Williston right now. One slide I want to present to you guys with alarm response. As you notice, you drive by the residential neighborhood, you see a lot of alarm companies have the signs in people's yards. This has also drastically increased our workload. You can see this year, we already respond to 136 alarm calls compared to 53 alarm calls last year. All those alarm calls were false. There was no burglary or break-in, but still required a police response on the matter. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Chief. Are there any questions for Chief Dossinger?
Mr. President, so Chief Dossinger, these alarms, are we required to be there? What's the, what's the whole picture on that? That sounds like a lot of time that could be spent doing other things.
We are contacted by the alarm company requesting our response. The alarm could be signaling a potential break-in to the residence, and we respond that the incident is, is actually occurring, and we are required to respond.
Is it a faulty equipment situation, or?
It could be a faulty equipment, or it could be an error by the key holder coming home, not disengaging the alarm before the person enters the residence or business.
Chief, with the business false alarms, we charge $100 for each false alarm?
$50.
$50?
Yep.
Okay. Residential, we aren't charging anything of this?
We are charging as well.
We are?
Yep.
How much are we charging for?
$50 as well.
$50 also?
Yep. If the alarm is because of an actual occurrence, of course, they're not billed. Or if it's a medical or a fire alarm, they're not billed.
Anything else for the chief? Where are you at right now with staffing, again?
Staffing, we're struggling right now. We, we got conditional job offers to one individual for Patrol Division. We are down, if we went through interviews today, we potentially got offered it for two individuals, but we got three spots to fill currently, and then two more by September, so we're actually looking to hire five officers total. Our biggest challenge is filling dispatch spots right now. We haven't been fully staffed in dispatch for over two years, and that can, continues to be a challenge for us, and we currently have three openings in dispatch with a possible fourth opening coming soon.
Okay.
And that's almost 40% of our dispatch staff.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
All right. We have a 5:15 agenda item, and I think Mr. Catan's going to introduce this item.
Mr. President, we have Scott Pickett from KLJ, who is going to present the population and housing methodology that we have for your consideration tonight. We have, I believe, a presentation, and he's going to quickly go through the slides that were given to you prior to it, along with the memo. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Pickett to present that tonight.
Thanks, Ed. President Johnson, Members of the Commission, staff, Scott Pickett with Cadmus Lee and Jackson. Before actually, you know, sharing the three or four slides, we have, I'd like to just briefly describe how the numbers were established. First, we, it was done in combination with NDSU and KLJ staff. NDSU prepared the housing demand forecasts, and KLJ then translated that into population forecasts. There are three different scenarios, and they're all, they're all based on how rapidly the Bakken Three Forks oil formation is developed out. There's a rapid scenario, and for each of these, NDSU actually had a high, low, and medium, and they picked consensus for each of those. So each of these three scenarios was, was the consensus estimation. So the rapid scenario is basically continuing the rapid growth of the oil formation, oil development of the oil patch, as we see it today. The slow or gradual scenario is where, where the, there'd be a more deliberate or gradual development of the oil field. And then there's a third scenario, which is just the average of those two scenarios. That gave us the, the housing demand data from NDSU. KLJ then applied three different methods to, to assign population. All three methods were from the census, basically either on housing tenure, the type of household, or actually the census also provides a single average household size. And with that said, then if you could show the, the slide. Okay, this is the first one. I don't realize it's a little hard to see. Actually, it's hard for me to see. Okay, this is the slow development scenario, and. One second, excuse me. And on the top portion, top-left portion, are the number of housing units projected, the housing demand. We broke it into different planning periods based on what we're going to be forecasting. So it was 2010 figure, and then what's happened since 2011 through 2013. And then the next row is actually the three-year period, what we'd like, we need to plan for. The next row is the five- The next row is the five-year increment of housing demand. The second and last row is the 10-year increment, and then finally, it's the remainder of the planning horizon. And you can see the... And this is, oh, it's important to note, these are permanent housing, this is permanent housing demand. This is not temporary housing, this is permanent housing demand. And so you can see at the end of the planning period, there'd be a total housing demand of nearly 19,500 units. And that is translated then to, on the right side, there's the various population calculations. And on the bottom of the table, you can see the total new permanent residents and, yes, new residents. And again, using the three different methods, they're all coming in right around 26,000-plus. Add then the existing 2010 population, and this scenario provides a forecast of roughly 44,000 residents at the end of the planning period. And then on the bottom of that, on the screen here, there's a chart that shows the permanent housing demand under this scenario, and the top...
Can you, excuse me? The 44,000, it's not addition to what the current census is.
Correct, that's included. It's the 26 plus the existing gets you the 44.
And that would be by the end of 2035?
Yeah, actually, yeah, 2036.
2036.
Yeah. And then you can see the housing forecast, they were all provided very similar results. You can see in the graph, all three lines almost overlay each other. So there was great consistency in the translation of the housing demand to population. So that is the slow scenario. Next is the rapid development of the oil patch, same layout. And you'll note actually in the left portion that the demand for new housing is actually, becomes negative in that 13-year period because the oil patch is developing rapidly, so the housing, you know, the housing market's going to respond, and then the oil play will play itself out in terms of employment gains. And then you can see the new permanent residents, using the three different population calculations, came in roughly at 22,500 or 23,000 roughly. You add the permanent population to those figures, and you come to a number of roughly 41,000. Not a significant change from the rapid. And the charts are very similar, but you can see the housing demand chart actually starts to show a decline in housing demand in the out-years, as with population. And in the last scenario is the average, and this is what city staff and KLJ are recommending that the city commission select for us to move forward with the analysis of future growth scenarios and identifying the impacts of those future growth scenarios. And just looking at the bottom line, you see the new residents, on average, about 24,500 new residents over the planning period, and the total population at the end of the planning period of roughly 42,500. It's interesting to note that in all three of these scenarios, the 10-year horizon, which we want to be using for planning for infrastructure, all show a doubling, a demand that doubles the existing housing stock. And that's the rapid period of housing demand and population growth, and it tapers off somewhat thereafter, and particularly in the out-years, the last 13 years. The last table I have here is just a table which focuses on the demand for temporary housing. NDSU provided a total housing demand for Dixon Trade Area and for the city of Dickinson, and we were able to simply subtract the numbers out to find the difference between the total and the permanent housing demand to get the temporary housing demand. And you can see, just looking under the Dickinson columns, that under the slow oil patch development scenario, the demand for temporary housing peaks at 2015 at roughly 4,100 units. In the rapid scenario, it peaks in 2022, '21, just shy of 5,000 units. And the average of the two peaks in 2015 with a demand of a little more than 4,300 temporary units. So there's demand, you know, and NDSU made their presentation without giving it any figures. They did, you know, say that there was a strong demand for housing in the short term. They defined that a couple of different ways, but, you know, I recall them saying five to 10 years, and this data reflects it, both in terms of temporary worker housing and permanent worker housing. And I forgot to mention that these were not based on the unconstrained model that NDSU originally developed. They actually placed constraints on housing demand by adjusting employment growth in both the primary energy sector, secondary employment, and increase the efficiency of the oil patch, operating the oil wells. And that actually kind of put a, you know, throttled down the overall demand. So they indirectly created a constraint by adjusting or revising their model. So this is not unconstrained. This is, you know, forecast of housing demand translated to population under three different scenarios. This is not a prediction. As Bob Shannon likes to say, this is a tool that the city should be planning for. This is a likely outcome based on the best information available. It's not a crystal ball, but it sure, all three methods do show a doubling of housing units in the, you know, for permanent residents in a 10-year period. And we seek the city commission's selection of one of the scenarios so that we can move forward in developing future growth scenarios and the impacts of those scenarios. And as I mentioned earlier, city staff and KLJ recommend selection of the average of the slow and rapid oil field development scenario.
Okay, well, thank you, Mr. Pickett. Mr. Kurtan, is there anything you would want to add to his remarks?
The one part, and I just want to make sure, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Pickett, the new population on all the three scenarios, we have the three different housing scenarios in order to figure out the population. That's based on census. We will formulate, after you choose tonight, and hopefully you'll be able to choose one of the three, we will come back and then determine what that population will be, either one of those three scenarios within that selected category, or use NDSU's that they're formulating at this point. But it should be in that general sphere. These are not exact numbers, but we need you to select the methodology tonight, and then we will finalize things as we proceed forward in the next month or so. Hopefully, that doesn't cloud it up what we're talking about, but I wanted to be clear about that as best I could.
All right. Any comments or questions here by commissioners?
I'd just like to note, we also, I just was informed that we have a joint meeting with the Planning and City Commission on June 14th, I believe, which will be, the purpose of that meeting would be to, once a forecast is selected, that will be our starting gun to do future growth scenarios, and we'd like to be able to meet with the city commission and the planning commission to make sure they're okay with those future growth scenarios before we go through the effort of modeling the impacts of those scenarios.
Well, it would just seem to me that the prudent thing to do would be to accept KLJ's and the city staff recommendation of the average of the slow and rapid development. Commissioners, do you feel differently there? Mr. Jackson?
I'd agree. I think it's splitting hairs to do otherwise.
You know, whether it's slow, rapid, or average, it looks like we're headed for 40,000 people, based on what we know today, or 40,000-plus, but...
Yeah, there's not a significant difference between the three scenarios, both in terms of housing demand and the population that will be generated from that, particularly in the first 10 years. It's like a 3,400 unit difference in that time period, the first 10 years, and thereafter, there's variation.
So what you need is a motion from us specifying which scenario we select, is that?
Yes, sir.
That's it. Well, for sake of the discussion here, would one of you commissioners present a motion?
I'm willing to select the average.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Now, more discussion.
Mr. President, I'm going to ask one question and just get a brief answer. I suspect we're going to talk about this more at the special meeting coming up, but I think I heard you say that we shouldn't see this as a prediction. Did I hear you say that?
Yes, I mean, it's a reflection of the amount of demand, and it's something that should be planned for because it's the best information available. Part of our contract is to establish a monitoring system, you know, monitor the oil industry, all these assumptions that were built into these numbers, and make sure that actually they're, you know, the assumptions are actually coming true. Or if not, you know, what is the difference, and potentially make some adjustments. So our intent is to have this, you know, a dynamic plan that on an annual basis, information, key information regarding employment and housing demand could be generated so you could reevaluate, you know, whether or not you're on track, or if things should be slowed down or sped up to meet increased demand. So it's a path forward for the next few years, for sure.
You know, maybe suffice to say that, maybe you could give this a little thought between now and the special meeting. You know, I'm seeing we're calling it a population forecast, but we're hedging a little bit that it's a prediction. Don't try to answer it tonight, but maybe at this special meeting, we could talk about that a little bit more to understand what that really means.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, you're comfortable with the motion, and all right, we'll vote then. Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Okay, we're down to public works and planning, and Mr. Kurtan, most of these are yours.
Mr. President, commission, the first item tonight is a rezon petition from Ag to General Commercial, Light Industrial, and General Industrial for the proposed development Energy Center North subdivision. The property is situated northerly of 33rd Street, southwest and easterly of Highway 22 in the north side of town. There have been no changes from the first reading. Staff recommends approval.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kurtan. You've heard his introduction. At this time, we'll ask if there's anybody from the public that would like to comment regarding ordinance 1463. If so, step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anyone for 1463? There's no one for 1463? Ask if there's any questions or comments by city staff or city commissioners.
Mr. President, I'll move. We approve the second reading, final passage of ordinance 1463.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is a rezon petition from Ag to General Commercial, heavy or high-density residential and medium-density residential for properties situated to the south of 8th Street Southwest and westerly of Highway 22. There are no changes from the first reading, and staff would recommend approval. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Kurtan. Again, you've heard the introduction. If there's a member of the public that would like to comment regarding 1464, step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. No one from the public? Any comments or questions by city staff or city commission members? Not, is there a motion then regarding this item?
Mr. President, move to proof, first, second reading, and final pass of ordinance 1464.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Mr. President, the next item is a rezon petition as well from Ag to R3, which is high-density residential for property located in the north side of State, or 21st Street West, approximately one-half mile westerly from the intersection of 21st Street West and State Avenue. The site is approximately 38 acres. There are no changes from the first reading.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtan. Anyone from the public like to comment on 1465? If so, step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. No one on 1465? Any comments or questions by city staff or city administrator, or city commissioners?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I will be abstaining from this one.
Okay. Any other comments?
Mr. President, I'll move for a second reading, final passage of 1465.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel abstains. The chair votes aye. The motion carries.
Mr. President, the last rezon petition tonight is from General Industrial to Community Commercial for property situated southerly of the Interstate 94, Interchange, and westerly of the Business Loop. There are no changes from the first reading. Staff would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kurtan. This is ordinance 1466. If you'd like to comment, please step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. No one from the public? Any comments or questions by city staff or city commission members? Is there a motion regarding this ordinance?
Mr. President, move to proof, second reading, and final pass of ordinance 1466.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second. Any discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Brings us to item B. This is the final plat. Mr. Kurtan?
Mr. President, this is a final plat request for S and B subdivision. The property is located at the southwestern corner of 21st Street West and State Avenue with access off of 21st Street West and also with State Avenue. The plat is approximately 20 acres, and it totals two lots. The Planted Zoning Commission and city staff recommend approval. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Kurtan. Mr. Colling, is this Resolution 21?
That's correct, Mr. President.
Thank you. Okay, any comments or questions by city staff or city commission members? Not, is there a motion regarding this plat?
Mr. President, I'll move...
Move to proof, Resolution 21.
Mr. Steiner moves the motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing done, and then we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. That brings us to item C. This is regarding Apex Engineering, and Mr. Soren is going to introduce this item.
Thank you, President Johnson. City commissioners, I do have two amendments to our contract with Apex Engineering for you to consider tonight. The first amendment is dealing with the modeling of a wastewater treatment collection system. They have done the model of the wastewater, of the collection system, and they do have textbook flow information in that model currently. We're looking to... We're looking to install flow meters in the system to calibrate the, the model to actual flows that are in the, the field. This agreement or amendment includes the installation of 12 flow meters throughout the system, which is at a cost of approximately $62,000 for the installation, removal, and collection of data, and the rental of those, and then another $23,000 for them to take that back and calibrate the, the system to give us accurate information on that. City staff, we feel it's important that we, as we're going through the system, that we get it as accurate as possible to make sure we're making the proper decisions we need to as we move forward with the development in the community. So we're recommending approval of amendment number one. Amendment number two is working with Apex, is working with Cadmus Lee and Jackson as part of the comp plan, dealing with the, the growth scenarios and capital improvement projects as they relate to, to the different growth areas. And that amendment is for $57,000. A second part to that is them also working with city staff on developments and checking new developments that are coming in and making sure that our current system can handle them or the improvements that we need to make by plugging those into the model that we're working on as well. We are also recommending approval of that. I'd be happy to answer any questions about those amendments you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Sorin. Are there any comments or questions regarding these items? Why would they have not have been part of the original agreement?
The, the original agreement with Apex was for the wastewater treatment plant itself. And so the collection system part is the, the additional part to that agreement.
Other comments or questions? Mr. Steiner?
You know, I would agree that, you know, we, we need this, but I'm kind of taken back to why we weren't brought up to this here from Apex in the beginning. I mean, if they have done some of these projects before, it would be nice to know that eventually that this would come, come before us. And we're talking close to $100,000 of, a change here.
Mr. President?
Yes?
If I could, I, I know I was involved in some of the early negotiations, and we have to remember that the original agreement from Apex was purely for sewage treatment. This work is going to tell us if we got a certain lift station that has to be replaced or enlarged, if we have to build trunk lines someplace. It has nothing to do with the sewage treatment aspect of things. It's really a, it's really a very different task than what was originally envisioned with that first contract. This is what, we're going to really need this work to direct us as to how we approve growth patterns as we deal with the legislature next year. It's going to be really important to have this.
Thank you, Commissioner Jackson. Other comments or questions? Mr. Cohen, can we deal with this with one motion to, if we choose to accept, accept amendments one and two, or does it take two separate motions?
Mr. President, you can take care of it with one motion if you wish.
Okay, thank you. Well, I agree with Mr. Jackson that, you know, we, we do have to do this if we're going to plan properly here. Would there be a motion regarding amendments one and two?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'll move the approval of amendments one and two.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have the motion, the second, more discussion? Hearing done, we'll vote. Mr. Frenzel?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Are there any comments or reports by city commissioners? Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the commission? If so, you can step to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Not, we would entertain a motion to adjourn, wouldn't we? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the motion and the second, all in favor of adjourning, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, and we'll ask-